Hello, Akrishna. Today is Tuesday, May 19th. This is a meeting of the Akrishna Board of Selectmen. We continue to meet remotely. I've actually tuned in to watch a couple of these meetings on television just to see what's being produced as a result of these Zoom meetings. And I think they're pretty effective. I think you really do get the full flavor of the meeting. And I think the product is just as good as the live meeting. So we've learned by doing this over the course of the last two months, I guess. But I think we've been very effective with these remote meetings. So let's go to the agenda. First, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda for the meeting of Tuesday, May 19th, 2020?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Second, Mr. Deroche, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And next, we've got the minutes of March 16, 2020. It feels like it was ages ago, but it was our meeting with the employees of the town, talking about COVID-19 rolling in and how we were going to react to that. And a lot of that's covered in the meeting.
Yes, that was the meeting that we declared the state of emergency in the town of Akrishna.
That was the meeting we declared the state of emergency. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of March 16, 2020?
Mr. Chairman, I haven't had time to look at them. I think we got them last night or something like that. So I'm not always on top of my computer to look at stuff that's coming in the last.
Would you prefer to hold them till next week meeting?
I would. I haven't even looked at them, opened them, nothing.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm fine doing that. Mr. Deroche, okay?
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Lisa, yeah, Mr. Gaspar.
I have Mr. Merritt six feet away from me. So I guess when we need to talk, I can swing him over. And he'll be on the mic camera and we'll just go from there.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
All right. So Lisa, if you could move those minutes to the next meeting and hopefully another set as well for that agenda, please. All right, so deferred. First, old business COVID updates. Anything, Ms. Hebert, you want to start with from an administrative perspective?
Sure.
Just general update on?
I think a lot of people saw this past week, the Baker administration released a new state reopening plan. And it's listed in, I think, four phases. And the timeline is pretty general because obviously the governor will be watching the situation and making changes to the steps as the situation calls for. But the first phase that he started from May 18th, there are a few changes. There are a few new businesses that are allowed to be open. Otherwise, gatherings continue to be limited to a maximum of 10 people. The businesses that are allowed to open as of May 18th are the essential businesses that were already operating. And then he's added in manufacturing and construction, following specific industry workplace guidelines and standards, houses of worship with only 40% of maximum capacity allowed and other safety requirements. And gun stores are open due to a federal court ruling and outdoor recreation activities, including beaches, parks, fishing, hunting, and other activities, following guidelines published today, which was, I believe, yesterday by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And then, as of May 25th, there are other establishments that can open as part of the start phase. And then he has a Phase Two and a Phase Three. So a lot of the information is up on the masks.gov website. But it definitely is timely for us. I know coming up on the same agenda item, we have reopening plans and new protocols. So this phase that has been opened hasn't changed anything for the town hall per se. But I think it's a good opening for us to start looking at what our plan should be going forward so that we can safely reopen as the governor keeps allowing it to happen.
Should we be talking about a plan to open town offices and libraries and senior centers? And how does that roll out? And I think we need to start thinking about that as well, don't we?
Yeah, so guidance right now for town halls, there's a Phase One order saying that, you know, as laboratories and other buildings start to open, they should be at no more than 25% capacity. So other town halls have been reaching out saying, you know, what does this mean for us? And the answer that we've received so far is that, you know, if an office has more than one person, one person should be working. You know, depending on, I mean, I guess if you have a large office of, you know, 10 people, it could be expanded to more than one. But for us, we don't have any of that. So our current plan that we've been working on, where we're keeping one person in the office physically at a time, follows this protocol. We don't have any changes that we need to make based on what he's released so far. But yeah, I think, you know, I've been in contact with the library, the COA, and other departments. I was talking to Jim a bit about it today, too. We're going to plan a department head meeting to kind of discuss, every department is unique in their needs and how they need to operate. So making sure that before we decide to open back up to the public or go back to normal, that we're taking a slow route where we have everything planned out and we know what steps we need to take to ensure the safety of the employees and the public as we go through. So we'll be working on that.
What type of timeline are we thinking for this? This is over the course of the next two to three weeks, is that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Chairman, I did have a question concerning the DPW in this whole transition. I noticed I have an article from the Boston Globe stating, you know, what can open up as of May 18th. And it said essential business. I believe DPW is considered a central business in the town. I was interested in seeing what kind of plan they have to go forward, you know, if they're looking, you know, how quick they're looking to go back. Because we, as you know, we've given, you know, different employees, different, you know, I want to call them perks, or not perks, but we've tried to adjust their schedules for COVID-19. And we have the DPW now working half shifts. So is this something that they're looking to, going to be back in business in the next couple of weeks? Or are they waiting for Phase Four before they're deciding to come back?
We can influence that decision as well.
Well, right.
Yeah. Yeah. Ms. Hebert, do you have a response to that?
Yeah, so I started the conversation today, and I'll be working with the DPW and Board of Health to come up with a plan. You know, we want to make sure that we have something that we can, you know, move forward and over the next few weeks, maybe sooner if it's possible. But we'll definitely be working on that between the Board of Health and the DPW to make sure, you know, we have a plan. You know, we don't want to do anything.
Let's see DPW back to normal operations sooner rather than later.
Well, because they are essential personnel.
Because they are essential, yeah.
And, you know, Phase One does include essential businesses, you know, to restart again. So if they have a plan, they're going to morph and change a little bit to go to Phase One to Phase Two to Phase Three, and how they, you know, look at coming out of this. So.
I mean, I'd like to see them back Monday, if that's when, you know, we're beginning to open businesses. I don't see any reason why the DPW couldn't be back to a normal schedule next week.
We are transitioning out of the situation we're in, and it is Phase One. So I'd just like to hear their opinion on how they think they're going to, you know, how they're going to progress through the different phases.
We have the ability to, do we have a supplier for face masks, Ms. Hebert?
Yeah, the fire chief actually was able to get a lot of supplies for us today. He has a lot of vendors that he works with. And so as we are progressing, you know, to opening back up, he's been very helpful in making sure we have enough supplies, masks, gloves, hand sanitizer, disinfecting spray. I think that's been a struggle for a lot of communities and a lot of businesses. Part of opening up is you need to provide that equipment and, you know, to make sure that everybody who's working and the public are safe when they're there. So I think as of right now, we're looking good for supplies.
I think we need to make sure that we're providing our employees with face masks. I think we need to probably not allow anyone into our buildings that is not wearing a face mask. I think that, you know, as part of any plan that we implement, I think that's what we got to. And maybe controlling the number of, you know, I can't picture, you know, more than one person in the collector's office. You've got to control people behind the counters.
Yep. So just some ideas when I talked to Board of Health, to the agent Joe last week about it. You know, we want to have a solid plan in place. We want to make sure that we have a plan that calls for daily sanitizing of common areas. Once we bring all the employees back into the building, I'm sorry, once we have the public come back in to have the floor marked with social distancing marks like you've seen in the grocery stores, staging areas for the residents outside. We need to come up with testing protocols for people who are at work and returning to work, making sure our key cards are all up to date and we're able to track who's coming in and out in the event of a positive, eliminate the keys for after hour entering, protocols for the public having access and showing up with, making sure everyone has masks on. And then he had mentioned the spit guard. So Jim has actually done a lot of work getting the Plexiglas spit guards, you know, like you would see at a bank teller's window. We've been putting them up in various departments in town. This was in part of Mr. Gaspar's suggestion a few weeks ago. Jim's been working hard with the kids to get everything set up for those various buildings. Also had a conversation with Jim earlier today about an idea he had where certain departments might have kind of like a drive-up window accessibility. So we're working through a lot of different things. Obviously, we have to put a lot of it on paper and get it out to you so you can review and, you know, see if you have any comments. Same thing for Board of Health, but we will be working on this over the next few weeks. Kind of like we worked to get into this, and now we're backing ourselves out.
I think we'll come back to that as we talk about future agendas. I'm not sure if we're meeting next week or not. But I don't think we want to wait two weeks to figure out what our plan is for reopening parts of governments. Mr. Gaspar, yes?
I think I missed out what Julie was saying about what we're doing with employees, how soon we bringing them back. I was thinking maybe June 1st or whatever the first Monday is in June, whatever date that may be, a couple of weeks away from now. You know, I think that she's right. When we talk about social distancing, I mean, we should have our employees wearing masks if they're interacting with residents as far as collection of payments and things of that nature. Maybe we could block off the hallway so that people aren't roaming around the town hall. If most business needs to be conducted, it's usually they're going to go in and visit Ms. Kosker in the assess's office or maybe the collector's office. But we could section off the upstairs. Nobody really needs to go upstairs without an appointment. That's the only thing that's up there is our finance department now. You know, I think that we can bring people back to work. You know, we talked about not, you guys talked a little earlier about not being in the same office. I think social distancing matters, mask wearing matters, things of that nature. But if we could, and then we communicate with our public that, you know, where the town hall is reopened for payments of tax and things of that nature. But, you know, I think it's important to have the residents understand that, you know, it's a partial reopening and any business that you can do as far as payment drop off in the mailbox and mailing your payments. I know most water bills you can mail to a Boston address, things of that nature that reduce the amount of traffic in town hall. I think the residents would be more than cooperative with that kind of policy. I'm just, I'm a little concerned about bringing people back, you know, three or four weeks from now. I think that maybe we ought to have something for the first Monday in June to enact a, have the board meet before that and vote to have this policy implemented so that we can open up town hall again. It is part of the reopening and, you know, we have to provide that service to our residents. We've been closed a lot longer than I think any of us dreamt of closing down. When we first did this, it was governor's orders with two weeks, 30 days. We're two months into it now. And, you know, I think that, you know, we got to open sooner rather than later. And, you know, everybody else is starting to do it. And, you know, I think we as government need to do it as well.
Of course, you know, I'm all for opening as soon as possible. And that's the word there. As soon as possible, we're going to have to watch the numbers, of course. If we see a spike in the next two, three weeks, that, you know, will influence at least my decision. And when I say a spike, you know, numbers in a bad way, I'm hoping that our openings can transition us through to Phase Four without increasing COVID-19, you know, episodes dramatically. So because as we go out there, you know, people are going to get a little looser in their actions and their functions. But June 1st, beginning of June, I'm on board with that kind of number to start, you know, looking at it to see, you know, to adjusting what we have now. We have the remote program where people can still work from home a number of weeks. You know, you don't have to come in the office. So some way blending it and following through through this transition.
Ms. Hebert, any concluding thoughts on that? How do we implement? When do we?
I mean, a lot of the towns that I've been seeing, they're working at coming up with the policies now like we are. So a lot of them have put out dates somewhere, you know, June 1st as a potential opening date, some a little later than that. But everyone has basically said, we don't want to jump into something. We want to make sure we have all of our ducks in a row. We have a policy in place. We've, you know, we've gone through the procedures so that everyone feels safe, the employees and the public. And we've kind of checked everything off. So people are not rushing. In a sense, they're doing it mindfully and as quickly as possible, but being mindful of all the precautions that need to be taken. So, you know, we definitely are working on it. And I can get you a policy whenever, as soon as you need it.
June 1st is a Monday. We conceivably meet on June 2nd anyway, is the Tuesday. I'm not sure if we're meeting next week or not, but June 2nd would be the Tuesday. We could meet on the Monday. We could meet next week and figure this out as well. But I think it's time to start, you know, the governor's bringing people back to work. And I think the town needs to start bringing people back to work. And we need to be careful about the way.
Yeah, Roger.
Mr. Gaspar?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's spot on. I mean, you know, we can do this and we just have to, we need some time so we can post it to the website and let the information get out there. And we could do a reverse 911 with that code red thing, letting people know and what the policy is going to be moving forward if you come into town hall. I think Mr. Merritt's done a good job over the last couple of months. We talked about it pre-COVID planning where, you know, he was comfortable working and he would do things appointment only. We could do that with our finance department. And if somebody needs to speak with somebody from the finance department, Ms. Kosker could do it as the assessor. She can do it by appointment only so that we're not just getting people funneling in and out of town hall. There's definitely a way for us to do this. The one thing that I would like to bring to Ms. Hebert's attention and to the board's attention is she needs to, Ms. Hebert needs to discuss this with all employees to see the comfort level. I'm sure that we may have a couple of employees, maybe more, that may not be comfortable come working with the public. And if that's going to be something that the board needs to review, I would expect Ms. Hebert to let us know situations those would be. And, you know, I think that we need to define somewhere in maybe the law, I guess, would say, how do you handle employees that may not be comfortable coming in? And for how long do you allow it to go on for? I don't know those answers. I don't think any one of us know those answers right now. But if we do have those situations, you know, we surely have to understand people's concerns related to this pandemic. And, you know, maybe they're not comfortable, and maybe the board allows them not to. And maybe a different circumstance, however, we're going to approach it. But I think Ms. Hebert needs to at least go through the list of our employees and talk to them and say, you know, hey, we have a couple that aren't comfortable coming back to work.
Okay. I'm going to jump to employee vacation rollover under our COVID updates. And we're going to be moving to the budget articles discussion yet. We've got Ms. Kelly and Mr. Merritt here that we're going to move to that next. But let's do the vacation accruals as a holdover from last meeting. And Ms. Hebert, you did distribute information to us. I know you do have some proposals. So do you want to start, or would you prefer we start sharing our thoughts on where we go?
So are you talking in reference to just the fire department or to the other departments in general? Melissa, I gave you.
Well, I mean, all of it. I mean, what, all of it. I mean, I've got some thoughts on what we should be doing in some. Why don't you talk about the fire department? I think that's a unique situation. So why don't we talk about that?
Okay, so fire department is a unique situation. They have been the front line in terms of, you know, attacking this pandemic, providing safety to the residents, obviously police as well. But their contract already provides for a provision for their time that is left at the end of the year. And fires does not. So when the pandemic started, the fire chief put a hold on vacation. Again, it was all hands on deck. They needed to make sure that they had enough employees to fill the ambulances for all calls. So as we're looking at vacation time, now that the end of the year is coming quickly, there are two employees specifically who will have vacation time remaining at the end of the year. I talked to the chief this morning, and the rest of the employees have vacation scheduled. So he doesn't think they'll have any significant time, if any, by the end of the year. But there are two employees who have time remaining. And it's somewhat less than.
How much time is he, because we talked about an automatic rollover of a week?
Yep. So I know one has, one has about close to four weeks, a little over three and a half weeks. And the other one is a little over a week. If you're looking at a 40-hour week, 48 hours for one employee and about 149 hours for the other. So the chief had suggested something to me today. He's been pushing for it for the last few weeks. But I talked to him today. He is proposing the one-week carryover, but also one-week buyback of the vacation time for those employees. The buyback would be somewhat of a cost savings to the town if we were to let them carry over the time. As you know, when it comes to public safety, if anybody takes a day off, it's filled with another employee at overtime. So the thought would be to try to save some costs and buy out the one-week vacation as straight time in the current year's pay.
Is one of the employees, the chief, is one, you say there's two employees, is one the chief? Or is it the chief and two others? Is the chief and two others?
No, I have to, I got a spreadsheet here in front of me, and it appears the only chief Gallagher and another firefighter are the only two. There's two people that have less than $300 buyouts.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. I only see two, one being the chief.
So employee number 1876, if you're looking at that spreadsheet. He also has, he has the 48 hours. So he does not have any vacation time planned. The other people have vacation time planned, so they'll be using all those hours. Yeah.
Here's, so a couple of, you know, as I consider this, and I think, you know, fire departments unique. But, you know, we, six, seven, eight months of fiscal '20 passed before COVID was an issue. So, you know, we were eight months into the year before COVID was an issue. So, you know, granted, two months have been tough. So, you know, I'm sort of weighing that as I look at employees that didn't use their vacation time because, you know, they probably had the best eight months of the year to date to use that time. I mean, starting July 1st through, you know, December 31st, a good time to use vacation time. So just tentative to that as well, acknowledging, acknowledging we've got, you know, the chief's in a leadership position. And, you know, I think that's a unique position. But employees have had plenty of opportunities to use their vacation time, you know, absent department shortages of personnel. So I think we've got to look employee by employee and make a decision. You know, we've already said you can roll over a week. You know, I think we did that last time. I think anything beyond that's got to be an employee by employee decision. I think the chief is an example of somebody that maybe we do something additional for, given his role running the department. Mr. Deroche?
Yes, I think, let me just get it straight. We're talking about the fire department now. I thought this conversation started that way.
Yeah, I went a little broader than that.
Okay. You know, I understand that the chief of any department had cut off all vacations when we declared a state of emergency. So the employees really couldn't do anything whatsoever, whether they wanted to take a week off. Plus the fact that I saw the article in the Standard Times that two firefighters, EMS people, were infected with COVID-19. So that added a shortage. So people, you know, in their particular case, like Julie said, when they're out, we got to get someone in their position as compared to, you know, other positions in town. We need the same amount of firefighters or EMS out there. So I'm, myself personally, I'm open to giving the fire department, you know, this, you know, this buyback situation that was requested for them, you know, and taking them separately from the other situations we have to consider.
Mr. Gaspar, any thoughts?
It appears, I think, Mr. Deroche commented, there is only one full-time firefighter EMS worker and then the chief that accumulated three, over three weeks. So are we, what are we doing with the other folks that have a week? The chief saying that they could use it, some of them have booked the vacation time. It'll pretty much eat that time right up, as far as anybody would like 1.3 weeks and things of that nature. So are we only discussing two individuals again? Are we discussing right across the board?
We're talking about the fire department right now. But I, you know, I think anybody with 1.3 weeks, somebody with 1.3 weeks could take 0.3 weeks between now and the end of next month and roll over the last week. So.
So you're talking, well, I know we're just talking about fire.
Fire, yep.
You said before that, you know, the chief's got, most of these guys are planned and they could use it up. So I'm just confused if we're talking about the guy with three weeks in the chief's time or are we talking about everybody in the fire department that have accrued vacation time? We going to allow them to carry that over? And again, as Ms. Hebert said, that triggers overtime and it can cost a lot when you're carrying over for everybody. Now, that can get costly into next year is what I'm saying. So I don't know, you know.
If there's an employee with 1.5 weeks, so that's basically eight days. So we said, okay, you can roll over a week. That leaves you with three days to use between now and June 30th. So you've got six weeks to use three days. That feels very possible to do.
No, I understand. We're talking about the cost associated with one week for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. six people. So if you allow one week carryover, you're talking six weeks vacation. You're carrying over a time and a half. That's what Ms. Hebert was alluding to before. And I think that she also made the comment that the chief was comfortable with all of those folks, but the two. No, Ms. Hebert?
Yeah. So if you look, I, I had sent this over earlier today. In case you haven't seen it yet, though, the, what he proposed was a plan to allow the carry forward of one work week. And if there was a balance, they could buy back up to one week. So he did out what the people, the current employees have for time if they're allowed to carry forward one week. And, and again, many of them have vacations already scheduled that he had planned.
This is an hours, this is an hours, yes.
It's an hour. Yeah. I mean, and, and they are a little bit weird because they're 24 hour shifts. So a week for them, for the, what he plugged in for a carryover was up to 48 hours, which is two shifts. But the buyback would be 40, based on 42 hours, because that's what their, their weekly pay is based off of. So when I'm looking at what he gave me for a spreadsheet that I forwarded to you all, there are one, two, three, four, five employees outside of the chief who would be carrying forward time. And one, two, three employees who would be, who would be buying out time. The buyout time for the other, for the employees, not including the chief, would be, hold on. The total would come to $1,459. So.
Sorry, what was that? $1,400?
For the, for the buyout, yeah. And, and the carryover, again, there would be five employees who, one, two, three, six, six employees who would have carryover time into next year, up to 48 hours.
Yeah, carryover for time and a half employees is tricky though. I mean, it, you know, just, I don't understand the 1.3 person can't take a week's vacation in the last five weeks that we have remaining in the calendar year, six weeks, whatever we got. I, I don't know. I just, I think that that buyout, I'd rather just buy it all out now. And, and as far as the chief goes and Mr. Aruda to, to allow him to carry over a week because they're the ones with three weeks, but everybody else is less than two weeks, one point something. And he's saying that, he's telling us that people are gonna use and schedule some vacation time. So I don't understand what are we, he should have given us out of that list, everybody that's scheduled for overtime. And then we could really look at what we have as far as a carryover goes. And if it's only point three of a week, you know, that's, that's a little bit different. But now we don't know what carryover, if we just say, yeah, we'll let them carry over a week. I think all six or seven employees are gonna carry over a full week and just take a couple of days and say, I'm good.
Can I, can I, can I try something? Can you, can everybody, if I do this, can everyone see the spreadsheet that, that? Try it. Can people see this host disabled the, all right, my host disabled the attendee screen sharing. So I can't share this spreadsheet I have with you. You know, it, it appears that if we give everybody a week carryover, would have to buy out four people, four out of the nine firefighters for a cost of $1,459. Is that correct in my assumption from what?
Yes.
It will not counting the chief, it would be three.
Right, okay, not counting the chief, it would be three. Okay, you're right. All right. So.
All those people, all of those people only costing us $1,400?
Correct, the three people, because, because everybody else is carrying over their week. We're not buying out that week.
Right. So the point three added up on everybody, if everybody had 1.3 weeks. You're just taking a point three and added it by the five people or four people and it's 1,400 bucks. That's why I say it's easier to buy it out. Carryover for the following year, I mean, we, we got some guys that already have four weeks vacation. They're carrying over a week's vacation and they worked a 24 hour schedule. It's, you know, I, I, I don't know, I'd have to sit on paper to see how it's gonna work out. But how many weeks are they really working and things of that nature? Just, I think it just gets a little confusing. I don't mind it for the, and one week carryover for the two, for the chief and the Mr. Aruda that's got three weeks left on it. But, you know, I think Roger hit on it before, eight months have gone in the calendar year. We should be down to this where everybody's basically 1.5 weeks left in the calendar year with this much time left and we don't. So that's a manager issue that, that we can look at and saying it needs to be better. I don't know. I just, when it comes to public safety, look, I understand that these are frontline workers and I want to do a K and form, so flexible, whatever you guys wanna do. I'm just concerned about next carryover.
This sets a precedent, this sets a precedent as well for.
Well, it is a.
What do we do in future years?
It, it, it sets a precedent. I hope we don't have a pandemic every year, but.
Yeah, I don't think the, I don't think the pandemic is, is necessarily the factor here though entirely. I think the pandemic is what drives these numbers.
The firefighters did, you know, halt vacations. So, you know, if Eric Arut, well, I shouldn't say, if a certain firefighter had, you know, time, they were unable to use that time, unlike.
In March and, in March and April, agreed.
Unlike other town employees who were able to use time, you know, we never put a restriction on them taking a vacation. So, but the fire department, public safety, you know, first responders. I mean, you know, we're talking about $1,500 to buy out there, you know, and give them a week rollover. I, I know that's, you know, an extra amount of money compared to other, other parts of town employees, but.
What would we do with the, what would we do with the chief?
The chief, you know.
He has his own contract, so he already has, he has a week buyout in his contract already. I, I, I thought we discussed last week doing the one week, allowing a one week carryover. So I.
Buying a week for the chief?
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm seeing in the spreadsheet that I'm looking at. Now we're giving, we're giving one, two, three, four, five, six, seven out of the nine firefighters, a week carryover. The other two either accumulated or used all of theirs up this year. And we're buying out three firefighters remaining hours separate from the chief.
Mr. DeRoche, you have, can, do you have a motion as to what we should do?
I'd make a motion to approve this scenario for the, oh, scenario, that's the wrong word. And I make a motion to approve the one week carryover as we agreed to last week when we all agreed unanimously. And to buy out the three firefighters remaining days for $1,459.44.
Mr. Gaspar, will you second that?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I would, yeah, I will, I will, Mr. Chairman, but that doesn't include the chief, right? So that's just the firefighters.
That's the firefighters, the chief.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second, I'll second Mr. DeRoche's motion.
My motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, with regard to the chief, so you're saying he's already got a week rollover and a week buyout? That's what his contract says?
His contract has a week, his contract has a week buyout or a week rollover.
So just one week, okay.
Yeah. So he had, he had brought this up before and I, I thought we talked about it last week. But what he, what he had asked was if he could also get the one week buyout and the one week rollover. Because obviously as a department head, he hasn't been able to take his time off either. And he would use the rest of his time from now until the end of the year, if he, if he's able to.
I make a motion, I make a motion to allow the chief to carry over one week and we buy back one week of the chief's time and he use the remainder of his time this year.
Use it, use it, lose it, yep. Mr. DeRoche, second on that?
I'll second that.
For the, for the discussion?
Yeah, can I clarify, can we, can we include the police chief in this as well, since he is in a similar situation, I think?
Who?
The police chief, I know last week you talked about the town except for police and fire, meaning the unions, but the two chiefs, I guess, are kind of not under either of those.
What does the police chief's, what does the police chief's contract say with regard to his time?
Same here, one week, one week buyback or one week carryover.
All right, could I suggest then that the motion should be the same for both chiefs?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, one week, one week buyout, one week rollover, anything other than that, use it or lose it, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. Other employees and I, you know, I'll start this, let me. And I'll, you know, I will point to the only, and I, I looked at a list and I think there are, there are a lot of cases that have been made for, you know, people that we should do different things for. And I, you know, I, I come around, I know, I know the COVID-19 issue's been an issue in, in a lot of departments and has, you know, caused people to, you know, have to adjust their schedules. But again, we've had eight, we've had eight months, so there's plenty, been plenty of time to, to use vacation time prior to this. But I would, you know, I think extraordinary circumstances with, with Ms. Hebert, you know, doing two jobs since September. I think we shouldn't, I'm not sure how much vacation time, I could tell you how much vacation time you have left, Ms. Hebert. But I think we should look to make an accommodation for her as well. Because, you know, I, I don't think, with her, I might have some other comments. But I think, I think we should try to make an accommodation for her unused vacation time. And I'm not even finding you on the spreadsheet. I know you're here.
Julie, I don't have your contract in front of me. We agreed to two weeks buyout. Is that correct?
And you've got two weeks, you've got two weeks left, so you're there.
Yeah, I have, yeah, just a little over. I can use up the time.
Never mind, take back everything I just said. Use it or lose it, Ms. Hebert.
Okay, it's, plus, plus we are paying you for two jobs.
Said with a, said with a smile. I'm not really angry.
Right, we're still paying you for two jobs? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Well, we got the town accountant's position on executive tonight, so.
Okay, very good.
And, 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 Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, for the record, for everybody at home, we are not paying Ms. Hebert two full salaries to do that.
No, not two full salaries.
I'm just making sure everybody at home understands.
Well, she's.
Good point, good point.
All right, hold on, what else, hold on, hold on.
You didn't make a motion with Ms. Hebert and I would like an official vote.
I don't think there's anything to vote. I think she, her contract takes, there's nothing we're doing for her that her contract doesn't already provide for. So her contract says she gets two weeks rollover, a buyout and she's got, what do you have? You've got two and a half weeks, so what, two and a third weeks? So she's got a couple of days to use by the end of June and the rest are already covered by her contract. I don't think we need any special action with the rest.
Does the language in the contract, Ms. Hebert, say approval by the board of selectmen?
Um, it does.
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve two weeks buyout for Ms. Hebert.
I second, Mr. DeRoche.
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
In the accounting office, do we wanna talk about Mel who's been doing two jobs?
Um, Mr. Gaspar, I'd just like to say that last week we voted unanimously for one week carryover for all employees. And I'm very, I'm very comfortable with that situation and I don't really think I'm gonna move on that position concerning the employees across the board. I feel we've been very accommodating to our employees, keeping their health foremost in our decision-making. We've offered work from home. We've never made the point that you have, you can't take your vacation. So the situation is what it is. My point has been all along. You know, it's one decision for the employees. I believe they're working very hard. I understand there's certain situations that have, you know, been, well, the servant offices that half the people aren't there and, and the employee in town is doing.
There's a few of those, yeah.
And I do understand telling people in those positions to take a couple of weeks off, that that office is gonna, gonna slow down in its productivity. But my position has been all along, business as usual concerning this. This is a health issue, this, so, and that is foremost in all my decisions. So I don't really feel anything has changed as far as vacation time whatsoever.
Mr. Chairman, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think that when he opened up, he, he said, Mr. Gaspar, but I think he meant to say, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I, we look so much alike. I, I understand, I understand. For two, two forty years, right, it's fine. All right. So any, any different thoughts, Mr. Gaspar, on that?
No, you know, I watched, I, I paid attention to what we did last week. I watched the tape over again. I think Mr. DeRoche is spot on. We, we made a motion, we all approved it, formal vote. I, I don't, I, I get it, the point that you would try to make, Roger, and anybody would try to make about the making special occasions, but I think we get ourselves in trouble when we start isolating certain individuals over other individuals. So I'm gonna stand by Mr. DeRoche and the board's vote last week, including yours, to stick with the policy we voted last week.
I don't, I don't disagree, okay. All right, moving on, we are back, back into the budget and the articles for town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, may I just preface this part of the conversation? I got a statement. Yesterday, the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation released their report, updated fiscal 2021 tax revenue forecast, and they're predicting a $6 billion loss. $2 billion caused by withholding, $2 billion in sales tax, $1 billion in income tax and $1 billion in corporate tax, which is a drop of 19.3% in the overall budget. So we were talking about 5% reduction. I just wanna mention it that that might be a real stretch from what I've been reading and seeing all of this. They note that the assumption in April's revenue are providing overly, were providing overly optimistic data. More current data indicates the economy is unlikely to ramp up quickly and the job loss will be far greater than originally expected. As the size and scope and duration of this public health crisis grows, we have revised our forecast to reflect the deteriorating economic outlook. With rapidly changing economic and fiscal conditions, this may be, this may not be the last time a revised forecast becomes necessary. So I found that very, you know, eye-opening, to say the least, so.
Agreed, agreed. This, this year could change mid-year on us. We're, we're building a budget based on what we think could happen and what actually happens could be dramatically different from that. Um, I, I think I'd like to move into the articles. We've got, we do have a couple of articles that we brought Mr. Merritt and Ms. Kelly in to discuss. So, and I'm, could we, I don't have article numbers at my fingertips. I've got all the articles. But if you've got article numbers, that would be helpful.
From the updated list that I sent out?
From the upper, updated list.
Okay.
Um, I think it's article, was originally article 14, now article 12 might be the first one.
No, it's number 13, number 13 is the no common driveways.
Yes, yeah, I, I've got the same one. I'm just, my numbering's, I don't know what happened to my numbering, but I have that as well, yes. Mr. Merritt, is this one, this one's yours, I suspect?
Uh, no common driveways, Mr. Chairman, it's not. But I can explain it.
Please.
Initially, the wording for common driveways was very convoluted and made absolutely no sense. And I can read it for you if you want. Number eight, under common driveways, it said, no common driveway shall be constructed within 150 feet of the structure that meets the construction standards herein. The very next section says, all principal structures shall be serviced by a driveway that is located within 150 feet of the structure that meets the construction standards herein. Ever since I've been here, which is going on 13 years now, it could never make any sense out of that. So last year, we changed it and we took. So last year, we changed it, and we took out a portion of that section. Real part that read anything was that all principal structures needed to be serviced by a driveway, and that was basically for emergency services. So that if people had a retreat lot, they had to bring their driveway close enough so that an ambulance or a fire squad or a police car could get to the, the building very quickly. And what, what's ended up being is that, you know, the way it was worded, that no, no driveway, common driveway could be constructed within 150 feet of a house that passed by or passed by a house, and that just didn't make any sense either. So what the planning board has done is to take out that whole section and just leave the special permit, which is this, this is part of, up to the planning board to determine if the driveways of substantial with grain drainage to access the buildings and has no other implication thereof. So I, I approve it. I, I think it's the right.
You endorse, you endorse the change. Can I, just, just one general, just one general struggle I have with, with bylaw changes, and, you know, the town, the town has a bylaw review aims on a list, and, and I remember last year for town meeting, the bylaw review committee came together half an hour before the meeting and was reviewing, you know, voting to accept and recommend all of the bylaw changes that were proposed. And, you know, I, I think, I mean, this one seems pretty harmless, but in general, I, I feel like the bylaw review committee should be, and, and we've got a different kind of year going on as well, so another disclaimer that we need to bring the bylaw review committee together to sit and pull the bylaws in one hand, look at the language being struck on the other, and endorse the proposed changes. Again, I think this one's, this one's pretty, you know, pretty mild change, I think. But it just feels like we need to engage that body. We've got a body that's supposed to be looking at bylaw changes, and we need to get them in.
About 10 years ago, Mr. Chairman, we used to do that. And then we were advised by town council that the bylaws consist of two sections, the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws. Of course, the zoning bylaws are part of the general bylaw, but that the authority to review zoning bylaws was held completely by the planning board, and should be governed then by the planner.
Yeah, well, yeah, I've, I've seen some, I've seen some examples of how that hasn't worked. And some things have been put forward that I, I, I still feel should get an independent, have an independent discussion and, and, and an independent review and an independent endorsement. I mean, when I was chair of the finance committee, we, we always endorsed every article. You know, whether it was financial or not financial, I, I wanted the citizens on the finance committee to support every article, to understand every article, and I, I think that's the role of the bylaw review committee as well, that, you know, we need to, we need to get them engaged. Mr. DeRoche?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that these, these two articles, number 13 and 14, I watched the planning board meeting on, from May 7th. And these two articles still haven't gone to a public hearing, and are scheduled for a public hearing, have been postponed to a public hearing on June 18th. Now, isn't there some timeline between the public hearing and when they would, these articles get printed, or there's a period of time, or suppose this public hearing, you know, doesn't happen, and these articles are, you know, presented at the town meeting? That isn't the proper process, is it?
Mr. Chairman?
Tabled, I suspect. Mr. Gaspar, go.
To answer Mr. DeRoche's question, and Mr. Merritt can correct me if I'm wrong, the, the planning board set an eight, June 18th meeting in anticipation if we approve the two articles that are being set forth. The, the problem that would occur is, it's a couple of days before town meeting, and there's a, after a public hearing, if they find there's no reason for our rejection to the bylaw change, and the planning board decides to move forward, there's a, is a appeal timeframe of 21 days after public hearing. So anyone has the right to appeal in Superior Land Court when it comes to a zoning bylaw change. The town meeting can still go forward to town meeting. It can be voted, what would, what would occur if in those 21 days preceding town meeting, somebody challenged it in Superior Court. The Attorney General would be notified of that challenge and wouldn't make a decision on that bylaw until a determination's been made by the judge. So it is a, it is a, it is something that has occurred in the past, not in my time. I don't believe in the last decade that's occurred. However, I've been told that these kind of situations have taken place in the town of Kuschnit. I'm not a firm believer in, in it that we, you know, the public hearing takes place, and then you, three days later, you're at a town meeting for approval, and then somebody opposes the changes and, and wins in land court, and it's dead on arrival anyway. So it's all, it's all an opinion of the judge at that point. So there is a 21-day appeal process after public hearing takes place. So, you know, there is been times in the past, I've been told that this has occurred. It's probably not good management practice to continue doing these kind of things, but, you know, it is, it is what it is, and planning board's been waiting for us to make a decision on whether we're going to accept these articles for town meeting for a public hearing, and then I guess depending on the board's actions tonight, the board's going to have to make a decision on how we move forward with public hearings. I actually wrote it down on my agenda to talk about that, just in case we make the motion to approve. I think it's going to be a circumstance tonight, after we talk about stormwater, that we don't really have a choice but to have a public hearing on stormwater bylaws for numerous amount of reasons we'll talk about later, but there is an appeal process that needs to take place. And again, it's been allowed in the past. I don't believe in the last decade that I've been on the board, but I have been told it has occurred in the past.
Okay, so if, if, if the public hearing doesn't happen, it's on the agenda, goes to town meeting, public hearing hasn't happened, it should probably be tabled at town meeting. If the hearing happens, it's voted on at town meeting, if, once the, once the appeals period passes, it's probably fine. If nobody challenges it, so you got all your votes in place. So probably, assuming the public hearing happens, it can, it can go to town meeting, but if it goes to town meeting without the public hearing, we're going to have to table it because you haven't had the public hearing.
That's correct.
Yeah. Um, I, I, I mean, I, I get Mr. Merritt's explanation. I mean, this one, I, I, you know, we got confusion in the bylaw. We need to, we need to clarify it. I, I don't object to moving this one forward.
I have no objection.
Mr. Gaspar?
I'm, I'm fine as long as we can figure out a means of public hearing at the end of this meeting. We need to have that discussion, and I think we can have that discussion, seeing how the board just allowed an article that requires public hearings, and we haven't had that discussion yet.
Well, that was the point I brought up.
Public hearing next Tuesday, scheduled as well. We're going to talk about, that is on the agenda, so.
Okay.
All right, why don't we move to, I, my, again, my, my numbering's all messed up. Upland, Upland Circle article. Mr. Merritt, is this one yours?
Yeah, this is one that I've proposed to the planning board, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's much more simply read and determined when people are looking at subdivision control law. I have a small map which I've left, and I can leave it on the town meeting in the selectmen's office, take a look at it, but it's, would replace the minimum lot width and the minimum lot depth, which has no criteria towards wetlands. And I think really would go a long way in helping subdivision control law in the future and how the town develops its land. As a, for instance, it would have had an impact on the Deep Brook subdivision, which I know the, the board, you know, had some concerns with, as I did. You know, there isn't, there's only two lots in the entire subdivision that do not, would not require a filing with the Concom. But in addition, you know, the, the Upland bylaw would, would have eliminated two lots and would have made the other existing lots probably much better as a subdivision. We're going to come across this a lot more.
Do you translate this change and what this, what this means and how, what this does practically?
What they have is the, the bylaw basically says, on any subdivisible lot, you have to have a minimum lot width and a minimum lot depth. And those are read exactly as, so the minimum lot depth is the minimum distance is measured between the lot frontage and the other lot line. All required lines of measurement must be completely within the lot. The minimum lot depth must be maintained within the required lot width. And you have to go to the minimum lot width, which is the distance is measured between opposite lot sidelines. The minimum lot width must be maintained at all locations on the lot that are totally or partially within required lot depth. You know, there's a number of different ways to interpret that. The Upland bylaw, the way it's written, there's really no interpretation. It, it is what it is. This is no dwelling.
Interpret, could you interpret it for me? Because I'm confused by what, what, just explain what this, what this means. Upland circle, yes. You're basically saying you need, you need 90% of, of.
In other words, in RRA district, you have to have 150 feet of frontage. So what this is saying is that you need 135.
135, yeah.
Diameter circle, it needs to occur, it needs to touch the frontage of every lot with no wetlands in it to have a buildable lot.
Okay.
So it's, it, what it does, if I, if, if I'm correct, Mr. Merritt, is they take that little 90% circle, and they slide it to the front lot line, where your frontage is, to the street line, basically, is a front lot line.
Correct.
And that little circle, the 90% circle, as long as when Mr. Merritt or the planning board takes that little circle and drops it, as long as it's done to the same scale as, as the original plan, they drop that down inside, they push it to the front lot line, and as long as that circle sits inside of, with no interference of, of wetlands or any other border of the property, it's considered a buildable lot. So if you had a lot that went like this and squeezed down towards the back, the way the bylaw says, if you don't have that frontage, it's not a buildable lot, because it's not even all the way down, 150 feet's not straight from each border, parallel down from each other. What this does is it takes that circle, slides it to the front lot line, they drop it on top, and they say, it doesn't matter if the lot comes down into a V like this, as long as that front lot line meets up with that 90% upland circle, it's considered a buildable lot.
Somebody, somebody with a, with a, is that a trapezoid? Whatever that's called. If somebody, you've got that, you've got that pie-shaped lot, that circle might not fit, right? Because the lot lines wouldn't allow that circle to fit if your, if your lot's, I can look at the camera. If the lot's going back like this, it, that may not, that may not fit. Let's see if I can make you bigger. Hold on.
Kind of cough.
Yeah, got it. Yeah, got it.
You know, if you look and you, it's tough, tough for me to hold it, but if you look and you see lot number 14.
You got it, yeah.
If you look at it, and I'll just put the circle on lot 14 so you can see. I'm sorry, let's, let's do lot 11. But you can see where, where I'm trying to place the circle.
Yep.
I can't go near them because it's social distancing.
I know.
Let me do it this way.
Can you, can you put it on? And can you lift your camera up over the, over the, and?
Oh, Jim, take your phone and put it down like this, Jim. It'll miss you.
Yeah, hold the phone, hold the phone.
Hold the phone over, over the desk.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
Perfect.
We're looking at lot 11, which is this lot. And could be the blue line, which represents the wetland.
Yep.
They've actually come off the frontage and drawn on the back the minimum lot width and the minimum lot depth. But if you place the circle, the circle says it has to touch the frontage line, which is up here, and it can't have any wetland in it.
Does it have to touch the frontage line? You can't drop that circle anywhere on the lot and have it fit? It's got to touch the frontage line?
Got to touch the frontage line.
It does, okay.
And that would be the same if I were to flip this over. And you would look at.
Where does it say in the, in the change? I don't think it says it's got to touch the frontage line.
Yeah, I, I can't fit that, that, that circle anywhere on that lot that doesn't interfere with the.
It says, it says right after the 90%.
Yard setback line, yeah.
It says to, to 90% of the required frontage and within which the frontage or a distance equal to the frontage at the front yard setback line must pass. So that's a little bit gibberish to me, but I understand what Jim's doing with the upland circle.
Could that language be clearer, Mr. Merritt? I mean, I get, I get the explanation, but that's not what I'm reading when I read those words.
Um, no, I don't, to me, it's very clear. Years ago, I built a house in, in Duxbury, and we had to go through the process of Duxbury, and that was when I was first introduced to the Upland Circle. If you go into a lot of other communities, a lot of other communities for the development of their subdivisions have what they call shape factors. And the shape factor formulas are so convoluted, you need a mathematician to figure them out. And when I looked at what Duxbury had implemented, and this is probably 30 years ago, it's worked quite nicely in that subdivision. I brought it back to Lakeville, and as chairman of the planning board in Lakeville for 15 years, I wrote this bylaw. It had a little pushback by the Concom until a year later when they saw how beneficial it was, and they wanted to increase the size of it, which they did, and that's where it's today. And the wording's really identical.
Which the frontage or distance equal to the frontage at the front yard setback line.
So, Mr. Merritt, this particular lot you, you demonstrated here, has it exists now? Is it a buildable lot? And, and why does it contain the proper amount of upland compared to wetland?
Well, that's questionable too, but they, they do all contain what is listed in our current bylaw as the required amount of upland and, well, the amount of required upland, but if, if you look, you know, if I, this is only a portion of it, but if I take my camera and show it back over, look at the lot lines and look where the blue lines are.
They've lost you. We lost you.
Pictures, pictures gone.
You must have hit something on your phone. Or maybe you went to sleep.
No, he's really gone now.
Well, a joint meeting. I did hit something.
Nick, Nick's coming back out to save the day.
Here I come to save the day. I just, I, I get it. I get what you're showing us. I don't, these words are, it may be clear to you, but what you, what you've shown us is not, in my opinion, what these words say, and I just, this just feels like something else that the person who succeeds you in that office is going to look at and and call, using your words, gibberish, because I, I just, I'm not sure what this says. I, I get your point, but I, I think it, it could be clearer. It could be said clearer. And I don't, I don't object to what you're proposing. I just, I just read these words, and I'm not sure what this, what this says. So I, I, my preference, I'm, I'm fine with the concept. I endorse the article. I just think we need to clear up these words so that we can understand what, and other people reading it can understand what it means without having it explained to them.
Then you're not really, then Roger, you're not really fine with the article, because if you don't understand it, how do we make people at town meeting understand it?
I, I, I'm reading this. I get, I get what Mr. Merritt's explained. I think, I, I get it. But I read these words and I don't, these words don't, to me, say what you just showed me. I, I picture other people coming in, grabbing our bylaws and trying to interpret this, and
Mr. DeRoche?
I guess I'd like another attempt at, at just, at just the language, and I don't think it's a big deal to change it, but.
Mr. DeRoche had a question, and Mr. Merritt was explaining it until he, until he.
Disappeared.
Jim, you're not, it's. Oh, he's back. You're back. Your face is showing, Jim. Hey, Nick, he's got something. Can you take a look?
He's connecting to audio. There you go. You're all set.
But Mr. DeRoche, Mr. DeRoche asked a question. I think it's important.
Well, I asked the question if, if these lots are buildable as they stand now without this upland circle. And.
They are.
And, and they are because they're far enough away, the home would be far enough away from the wetlands on the property, or?
No, because like I say, of all but two lots, the eighteen lots subdivision, we're going to have to file with Concom before they can ever get a building permit. My own feeling is, is that it's not the way we want to see our town developed.
What is, what, what's, what do you mean file with CONCON? What would, I mean, if we got what, if they got what, I mean, CONCON shouldn't be allowing lots to be built because of what?
They have to file with any lot that has wetlands within 100 feet of the building. Or disturbance of.
Oh, within 100 feet. Okay. All right.
So that's a fact, that's a factor as well, that, you know, if that circle puts you within 100 feet of wetlands, you've still got a problem, right? Or no? Because you've got that circle.
The circle makes them, makes the development of a subdivision plan conform so that you don't have that many filings.
So it's easier to develop than it is, it, it would be easier to develop as far as I understand with the upland circle versus not the way it is now. Is that correct?
Well, you'd end up having less lots and more conforming, uh, buildable lots. Lots will look like they're more inviting.
So if you're, if you're, if you're in, if you're inclined to see more developing, development, the upland circle is beneficial. If you're not inclined to see more development, then you wouldn't want the upland circle, I guess, is what Mr. Merritt's saying.
No, it's just the opposite.
Okay, just the opposite. Can you explain that?
Well, if, if we were to look at the deeper subdivision plan, if the eighteen lots that were approved, the upland circle would immediately eliminate two of them. So rather than having an eighteen lot subdivision, you have a sixteen lot subdivision. You end up having bigger lots. You have houses further away from the wetland. You have less wetland filing. Um, and you end up having a better development.
Okay.
Ms. Kelly, any, any thoughts on this? This seems to be a conservation commission issues as well with regard to wetlands or any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. It, it'll keep people away from the wetlands, you know, better than it, than what we have now.
Okay.
There's nothing worse than having somebody come in with a plan where they're gonna build 10 feet from the wetlands, you know? So the upland circle is a much better idea.
Good. All right, well, it's endorsed. I, I guess, I, my concluding comment on it, Mr. Merritt, is I, I, I endorse it. I really think the words could be better. I, I, um, and I, you know, other, Mr. Gaspar understands. I don't know if you understand it based on reading the words or it was explained to you, Mr. Gaspar.
I don't, I don't, Roger. I'm with you on that.
So I just may, maybe it's me that I'm reading it and I just don't get it, but you know, um, once you explained it, I, I get it, but the words don't say what, in my opinion, the words don't say what you explained. So it, I think if we could get another attempt at making it clearer, I don't think that's a big deal to make a minor revision and we could stick it in, but, um, it just feels like that should be, could be clearer, should be clearer.
Yeah, if, if I could actually sit with you, Mr. Chairman, and try to show you this over a Zoom meeting, I think it would be crystal clear. I really don't see any other possible way to make it any clearer than it is. If you understood development, you'd understand the wording.
How many?
Almost every engineer does understand development.
How many, how many? Res, we got two residential zones that this is impacting, residential district. And then residential village district, which is the smaller district of 10,000 square foot lots, correct?
Correct.
Do we know if this would have a huge impact on developing the smaller residential village district? Because we, when this bylaw, the smaller lots went through, that was never communicated with DPW for a water study and we were concerned about more development. Uh, we pretty much threw that and, you know, say that there may be a half dozen other smaller lots that this might be able to help out and that's it? Or is this gonna bring 20, 30 new lots in the residential village district?
Actually, what it would do, um, Mr. Gaspar, restrict development. Um, and reduce the number of lots in the residential village. So it would have less impact on the infrastructure, um, and the cost for taxpayers.
Mr. Chairman, at, at this, at this point, I need, I need to take a week and, uh, and, and assess this, this article more closely. I feel personally, I, I can't give a decision either way. I, I hear both points. I hear, you know, the point of, uh, you know, protecting wetlands and keeping homes away from the wetlands, that sort of thing. But now we just brought up, uh, you know, it might impact in the residential or the, uh, the village district. Um, I, I just need a little bit more clarification and I, I think tonight, I'm not getting it here on the Zoom meeting. I'd like to meet with Mr. Merritt, get a good description of it and, and come back next time or, you know, however we vote to keep it, you know, to keep it rolling, keep it on and take it off. But I don't feel comfortable, uh, voting tonight about keeping the article on.
Much time do we have, Ms. Hebert? Just, just, um, and I agree with you, Mr. DeRoche, but I'm just curious, just wanna get a, look at the calendar and figure out what, what we've got for time.
Um, I think if, uh, begin, the first week in June, if, um, let me just, uh. One second. So one, two, I mean, yeah, but I would say we would have to have it all together by that first week in June. Have it printed in time.
Okay, so we met again, no, you know, June 2nd. We may meet next week. We'll definitely meet on June 2nd. Uh, actually, we've got a meeting already scheduled for June 2nd. So we could get it done then. Um, I'd like to, Mr. Merritt, just, just going back to your offer, Mr. Merritt, I, I, um, you know, certainly could look at this, uh, we could have a Zoom meeting sometime tomorrow, perhaps. I'd like to look at it. I mean, I could, I could take a, a shot at, um, changing the words to make it clearer to somebody that doesn't understand like me. And I, I think the word should be clear to somebody who doesn't understand like me. I, I, um, you know, it should be written in, in layman's language and, you know, it shouldn't require an engineering degree to. So I, I, I mean, I'd be willing to take a shot at, at, um, you know, at trying to make it a little bit more understandable. I, you know, I, I get it. So maybe we can, I'll give you, I will give you a call tomorrow morning and we can figure out a time we can talk through this.
I'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, article, whatever, the stormwater bylaw, which is the next one.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah. Um, is the stormwater bylaw, is that, uh, Ms. Kelly, is that one yours?
That's me. Yeah.
All right, welcome.
Yep, that's, this is all added because the EPA audited us and decided that we needed to add this stuff to our bylaw. So it's basically to, um, to, you know, to give us the authority to, um, to find people if necessary and to have them notify us of spills. And, you know, and to say that discharges are prohibited and illicit connections are prohibited and and if you have an illicit connection, uh, you have to fix it using BMPs, which are the, you know, swales and rain gardens and that sort of thing that the EPA is pushing.
Who, who drafted, uh, who drafted this? Is this our attorney or the EPA's attorney? Who, who, who drafted this document?
This language came directly from the EPA's model bylaw.
All right. Um.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gaspar, go. We need a public hearing for this too, I suspect, right?
You do.
Yeah.
Yes, I guess the planning board will have to do that. Yeah.
So, um, last, last week, um, Merrily, we talked about this and, and I seen this, you wanna talk about a convoluted bylaw. Um, this is it. Um, very controversial, I guess, for some folks, especially when it comes to understanding this. So I go right in, when I seen this massive bylaw change for our stormwater requirements. And I started diving into this thing and this has been going on for quite some time. My, my concern is, is once I started looking into this, I've done some printouts from, uh, mass.gov's website and I've learned a lot in a short period of time. And one of the things I wanna read to you is the MS4 permit requires each town to implement a public education and outreach program that reaches four different audiences. And that includes messages that are most relevant to that community. Um, I could go on and on and it says, uh, Mass DEP and EPA encourage you to work with other towns, community groups, watershed, uh, um, associations, stormwater coalitions as you implement your public education program. So I guess I'll start off with the first part, public education outreach that we've done none. Um, the board of selectmen, the board of selectmen haven't ever been engaged with MS4 permitting with you or planning board or anybody when it comes to the MS4 permitting, um, of this. I would say massive requirement that's coming down the pike after my discussion with DEP. So I guess, I'm guess, my first question is, is why the delay? That we're just reviewing an article three, 30 days before town meeting when we have had ample time to know about MS4 permitting, because it's not something new. And why haven't we fulfilled those obligations of the MS4 permitting, requiring us to do public education and outreach programs, which is required under the statute of EPA for MS4 permitting?
I have started doing public education. Um, I have sent out one so far with the, with the town census last year. Uh, that went to all residents. And then, um, I have a couple in the works. I just haven't got them sent out yet. It's, uh, the matter of finding the, the right mailing to add them to, to get them to the right people.
Cause the education is just providing documentation to the residents.
Well, it's, it's, it's much more in detail than that. I, I got, I got a bunch of stuff that I've read and it says precisely what the different departments and or boards will do is up to each individual municipality. There's no prescribed approach. And each municipality is free to determine what works best. For example, when figuring out how to meet the requirement of the 2016 permit to retain as-built drawings that depict all structural and non-structural stormwater controls for new development and redevelopments. Many town departments may be, need to be involved. That task may involve the DPW, which may track where structural controls are located that need to be maintained by the municipality, the building department, which may rate, retain the files that locate stormwater controls. And the operation and maintenance OEM plans associated, associated with each stormwater control. And three, the zoning board, planning board and or conservation commission, which may take the lead for requiring specific stormwater controls and evaluating the sufficiency OEM plans.
Not sure what any of that, I'm not sure what any of that means though.
Yeah, I know. That's, that, that's the problem is none of us, none of us do. And the reason we know a little bit about is because I have to dive right into this because I don't think that this is something that we should have waited for the last minute, Mr. Cabral. And then, and then we say that we don't, you know, this has been, and I've been doing an outreach program. The problem is again, I reached out to DEP and I got a, I got a, a woman I spoke to that was really awesome. Her name's Laura from DEP. And she sent me an email. Um, this, there has been two MS4 permits in Mass. So one was issued in 2003 and the most recent one in 2016. The permit was issued in 2003 with less, with much less prescriptive than the one in effect now. So then they go to the most recent permit and they go through the public education and outreach in 2016, public involvement and participation. Construction site, stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management control, illicit discharge detection and elimination. Stormwater discharge is good housekeeping and pollution prevention. I think the most important part of this that I was disturbed by is this. It says, Acushnet indicated that they did not complete some requirements of the 2003 permit. Which included two bylaws, erosion and sediment control, as well as illicit discharge detection and elimination. These two requirements were to be in place by 2008. And since they were not, Acushnet has been out of compliance in recent, in recent months. EPA has issued an order to Acushnet and required it to complete the bylaw required of the 2003 permit by June 30th, 2020. If this is not completed, it is possible that the EPA may issue a fine. This is not up to DEP as EPA is the enforcing authority on this point. So, and my email goes on and on and on. So, you know, I, I guess I take, uh, I'm a little upset about the point that this has been, we haven't been in compliance since 2003, then again in 2008. And we're seeing that you started mailing things out, but I haven't seen any of this stuff. You've had ample time to come to the board and discuss stormwater and the MS4 permitting and, and it's never taken place with the board of selectmen. And I think the first place that you start is with the board of selectmen saying, there's a lot of costs associated with MS4 permitting. The lady warned me about that, that it's gonna get ramped up. So the board of selectmen have no idea what these costs are and where we're going and in what direction we need to go in. I'm a little, I'm alarmed by this. I really am. I'm very.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject, Mr. Gaspar, just to, I mean, I, I read, I read this. I mean, I, this seems to be fairly, you know, you, you're talking about a, a bigger picture certainly, but, um, what's being added as appendix A as the article is, feels fairly generic. I'm not sure that there's anything in, in what this says necessarily that hurts us. Um, um, you know, it, it feels like there's a bigger, um, there are some bigger issues here, but I'm, I'm, I mean, if you've read, is there anything in the language that's proposed that's not taking away from any of the points you've made at all, that, that maybe we should have been discussing this earlier? But what I see in this bylaw, um, it seems fairly generic and is just putting in place guidelines for uh, managing illegal discharges into, into the sewer system, uh, illegal connections into the sewer system. Just, just gives us some ammunition against people doing things that they, they shouldn't be doing. So.
No, I, I understand, Mr. Cabral. And I, and you know what? It, it is a much bigger issue because I guess when we, we, we pay a salary to an employee, we expect a job to be done. And this is telling me that the DEP emails telling me that we haven't done that job and we're in non-compliance and, and we're getting a black eye from DEP and EPA. And now we're being threatened. And the DEP, Laura from the DEP made me understand that we really don't have a choice at this point. We should pass, and I should do my job um, with this board in town meeting to make sure this gets passed because she assured me, the last thing that we want at this point where we're at with EPA, which is a federal, um, law, is we do not want EPA coming in and taking control of our stormwater. And that could be a situation that we would see if this stormwater law doesn't get passed. So I understand that we need to do this. I, I, I don't agree with not going through the proper channels and the proper policy that they laid out in the MS4 permitting. This thing's been backlog from 2003, 2008, 2016. And now we're just saying, okay, we're getting threatened by EPA. Let's pass something.
This, this feels like something, uh, you know, like Woodard and Curd would have given us some guidance on is some of the work they've done for us as well. Let me, let me go to Ms. Kelly and just, if you could, just maybe any, any responses to some of the conversation that's been had? Any thoughts on?
Well, I apologize for it being so late coming in. Um, that was a problem that I had working with Henry. Um, but basically I was unaware that we needed all this language in our bylaw. And we were told at the time we passed our bylaw that it was, it was okay with the EPA. But so it's, it's been since the new permit came out, which it's a 2016 permit, but it didn't actually come out for a good year after that. Um, so I, you know, all I can say is that the EPA came in, did an audit and said this was what was missing. So that, this is why we have this language in front of us now.
There's nothing, there's nothing in this, there's nothing in this that, um. I, I don't think there's anything in that, you know, the, the bigger picture you're looking at, Mr. Gaspar, I, I acknowledge that, but um, I, there's nothing in this article that, and I, I read it once, I read it quickly once. Um, but it seems to be very generic and just putting in place in our bylaws, some generic guidelines for how we manage wastewater and sewer connections. And that.
There's, there's a lot, there's a lot to it. There's a lot to it, Roger. The bylaw is the bylaw. We gotta do it. It says, uh, this woman from DEP says, this is likely why the bylaw you receive for review is complex. There is a significant amount of detail in these bylaws that require good coordination between departments. All in all, it is important for Acushnet to approve this, the bylaw as the municipality is currently out of compliance with Federal Clean Water Act and moving this along is in the best interest of the town. So I get it. I'm just, I, I just, I can't emphasize enough that this is something that we, if Merrily, if you're having problems with planning and things of that nature, because there's a lot of things within this bylaw and within the MS4 permitting, forget about the bylaw, Roger. There's a lot involving MS4 permitting. And it's a lot of controls for the planning board as far as development, redevelopment. Mr. Merritt needs to be familiar with it. Um, I, I got some paperwork that says all these other departments need to be, um, prepared to be part of this. So I guess, I guess Merrily, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to offer up a possible solution and I'm, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna say a few things and just see if you agree to the concept. I, I, cause I think that we've identified we have a problem. And I, I wanna try to offer up a solution, maybe for you to think about and maybe in your department, Julie and the rest of them, you can talk about this, but maybe a possible solutions, we need to define whose responsibilities are different, uh, are for different aspects of stormwater management. stormwater management, create a checklist for all required departments to sign off with their requirements for MS four permit, have all our resources in one place. And and again, Ms. Ms. Merrill Lee, that there's, instead of us paying engineering firms, because there's a lot of costs associated with this, and we'll talk about engineering firms some other time, but consultants that I've talked about, is to reduce some of the cost of consultants. This state has a stormwater coalition that has a website for questions and outreach solutions, so if we don't have the answer to a question, you can go on the state's stormwater coalition website, plug it in, and within a week, you'll have an answer on how other towns dealt with it. And also, the Buzzards Bear Coalition can be a helpful resource as well. So we have some resources, I just don't want, I want to make sure that we we're stuck with it, we're gonna, we're gonna approve this thing at town meeting, hopefully the residents will listen to us and approve this MS four permitting, the bylaw, the stormwater bylaw, but there's a lot that goes into this, it's very convoluted, and there's different sections that different departments, not just a stormwater agent, needs to be paying attention to so that when a plan is submitted to the planning board or Jim Merritt, he can go to the checklist and all that information, all the resources are in one place, and he can make sure that he's making everybody in compliance with the MS four permit, because that's what the law calls for. So if we're gonna do a bylaw, then we have to make sure that all aspects of the bylaw are going to be enforced, whether it's development of somebody's property or a whole new development, or just perhaps on the yard, on the yard watch, Merrill Lee, and the conservation commission's watch, watches is wetlands, right? So if it pertains to wetlands, conservation is going to handle it. If it's development or redevelopment, it'll be planning board and Mr. Merritt. If there's certain stormwater drains already there, DPW needs to look at their punch list. So we have to figure out whose responsibilities, the whole MS four permitting process, whose responsibilities, where they fall under, and there should be a checklist form for everybody to sign off on before a plan is approved by the planning board, to make sure we have all our ducks in a row and we're in compliance with our MS four permit. Is that fair to say?
That makes good sense, yeah. I did come up with a stormwater permit. I'm not sure if it has taken off yet or not, but the idea is to have the stormwater permit go to everybody who looks for a building permit, and that way we can make sure that we, nobody falls through the cracks.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different aspects in the MS four permit, Mr. Cabral and Mr. DeRoche, and some of it doesn't pertain to Merrill Lee at all or Jim Merritt or planning board. It goes down, it comes all the way down to our municipal buildings, our parking lots, street sweeping by DPW, storm drain cleaning by DPW. So that's why I said there should be a good checklist in place for everybody to go through it and make sure that we're we're punching this off. And I think that might have came through a notice of intent to DEP as well. Is that correct, Merrill Lee?
It did, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let's, let's, let's come back to the to the stormwater article as proposed. We, it feels like we don't have any, any option but to endorse this and bring it forward to town meeting unless we want a legal battle with the EPA. We can hold it to, you know, if people want to read it one more time, we can hold it the next time. I did read it. I thought it felt pretty generic, but if you want to hold it to our next meeting for approval, it doesn't feel like it's negotiable?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, after my long conversation with DEP, I am of the mindset that we need to put this town meeting and ask for approval by our residents, whether we we don't want to or we do want to. It's something that I, that they stress to me that it really should be done because, again, we do not want EPA coming to the town of Akushna and taking over our stormwater controls and our MS four permitting. So I will make a motion to put it on town meeting, or I would ask that it be posted on a town's website ASAP.
We need a public hearing again, right?
It is what it is, Mr. Cabral. If we're gonna do a public, if you're gonna do a public hearing for planning board, for the bylaws that are set forth, or at least one of them we approved tonight, right, Mr. DeRoche and you, and maybe I'm gonna get with Mr. Merritt to look at the upland circle and make sure that we all comprehend that and understand it a little bit better. The last thing, I think, I think the reason, you know, we remember last town meeting, how convoluted, and we spent 45 minutes talking about box trailers, right? We took longer for box trailers than we did the whole town meeting. These are the kind of things that we should be, as a board, looking to avoid in trying to provide a very clean town meeting to our residents and at least be knowledgeable on everything that we're forwarding to town meeting and we're not, and then that's disturbing for me.
Bylaw review, that's the bylaw review committee point as well. Mr. DeRoche says a motion to forward this to town meeting warrant or keep it on the warrant for approval. Any comments or will you second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this? I mean, again, the warrant's not finalized, I suggest, you know, we all give it one more read, but I read it, I, I, it doesn't feel like there's anything in there that that hurts us, but let's all just try to give it one more read, and we can have another conversation about it if necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think in in one particular matter, it's gonna help us a lot.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the upland bylaw does have some bearing on MS four permitting.
Say that one more time, please.
The upland circle does have some bearing on the MS four permitting.
Okay. But, thank you.
All right, well, I second, I second the motion.
Oh, we didn't vote, everybody, we're all in favor, yes?
I.
I.
Okay, thank you. We've got the floodplain overlay district, we're done with that, right? I think that's federal government saying this is your flood zone, and any comments from Ms. Kelly or Mr. Merritt on the floodplain?
The floodplain bylaw is, in fact, it's a federal law of every three years, they take a look at mapping and making.
Can we draw the lines? Yep.
They're expecting every town adopt the changes. Unfortunately, they're giving us a deadline of July 8 by which we have to adopt. You can ask for a letter of recision, but that impacts every community if it's offered, and they told the town, right, that they probably won't approve it. I also said that there are some towns where adopted, there are no towns in southeast Virginia, Massachusetts that I'm aware who have had their town meetings and have adopted the bylaw. I believe Ms. Hebert has gone back to town council, along with some of the local, or actually the regional, planning agencies like Serpents and, you know, the mass planning agencies, to see if they can adopt special legislation with the state to approve the selectmen for this year and to make that approval. And why this is important is because this gives the town financial benefit in the event that we do have a storm surge, whether it's through our river or wherever. If we don't adopt it, then we gain no federal emergency management fund, and all those people who may have had property damage get nothing from the federal government. So we have to adopt them. And hopefully the legislation will come out so that if for any reason we don't have a town meeting, we, you know, the Board of Selectmen, the Free Review can adopt or accept them.
Gentlemen, any comments on this?
Merrill, Merrill Lee?
Yes, sir.
Has the, has the floodplain changed the mapping of it, the area expanded? Has it changed that dramatically or is it minor changes?
No, it's very minor. You're hard pressed to find it.
Is it mostly along the Akushna River, I assume, through town?
Yes. Yeah.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Are we done? I believe we're done with articles, let me go back.
Mr. Chair, I think there were two ones, other ones that we had flagged from last time. One was CPA article that actually involves Merrill Lee.
It's not here, yeah. We don't, we don't have the articles, do we?
Did we pull them already? Let me see.
We didn't have them.
We already pulled those articles.
So the other one was the 35,000 for fire apparatus, and he had sent over the detail I had forwarded to you about that. I think Mr. Gasper had questioned. It was for vehicle refurbishments, specifically engine five, but chief had given some detail that I sent over to you so you could see exactly what.
I've got that email, if you want, I can, I can read it, but it's just routine, routine maintenance of our fire apparatus.
There is multiple, there's multiple engines that need to be, any, any spoke specifically for 35,000 for engine five. When I had spoke last week, I said he can give us a breakdown of the repairs, he's done it in the past, and it's changed now where it's multiple vehicles for, you know, refurbishing. I guess, I guess, you know, I know they, the way they word articles, and we had happened to us last year with $250,000 with a DPW article, it was meant for one intent and it was spent on other intent. So, you know, I think that, you know, we, we gotta just keep an eye on what's going on. He did give a breakdown, it didn't expend the whole 35,000.
It got in front of me, right.
Yeah, I didn't expend the whole, he didn't expend the whole $35,000, but I think, you know, leaving a little buffer in there for the chief. When it comes to, you know, fire apparatus, you say it's a $5,000 repair and it's really an $8,000 repair, so it could lead to more expenses. So I don't have a problem leaving a little buffer in there for the chief. I just, I'd like, if he's gonna spend the money, I would like the approval to come from the Board of Selectmen through that article before it's spent on all this different stuff that, you know, we might raise questions on.
Right, well, I do have his email here in front of me also, and.
I do too, yeah.
What, 22,000, engine five is the, what's being requested?
Engine five, he's got, he's got about 17,000 being spent on engine five, and the balance would be, finding about new tires on another vehicle.
Yep. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with this, you know.
I.
And I think the point that you bring up is if, you know, he contacts us, you know, before it's being completely spent for approval, that's fine.
Yeah, I think, you know, the way it's been done in the past is if we get an article like this and, you know, it's fine that we get the, it's basically to get the appropriation, right? And then he's, he's mentioned a certain amount of dollars for engine five, we're all in agreement with it, but if any more money from that 35 is gonna be spent, he would come in front of the board and say, I have a remaining balance of $10,000, I'd like to spend it on this based on what the, you know, there's a company that they use for fire apparatus, you don't just bring it to a regular garage, and he says this is what needs to be done, we make a motion to approve, and he's allowed to spend the money, but just to blanket it and let it be spent on whatever it needs to be spent on, that can be dangerous sometimes.
The, so we all endorsed that article. The CPA articles, do we have CPA articles, Seabird? My version of the, does not. Was there something distributed subsequent to what I'm looking at?
Yeah, they're under the draft articles. Now that I'm thinking about it, I think we actually pulled the article.
We did.
Yeah, we voted it last week.
Do not present any CPA articles at the upcoming town meeting?
No, we have two others. So number, number 17 is the generic revenue article, and then 18 and 19 were, yeah, 18 and 19 were CPA articles that we kept on.
$2,000 bucks for the fire department?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I've got that, all right, I've got that, yeah.
And then, and then the school department.
I've got one here, I've got a note here that says, hold on, let me find it. It was in my version that I got. My apologies, I just saw, I just saw it, and now it's gone.
Number 18, the 80 grand for the.
No, I thought it was further up.
That's just, that's just the allocation, number 17, Rogers, just the allocation to 10% each category, and then, and then there's a lump sum that we talked about, the administrative cost, but Julie assured us that it's only like 800 bucks that gets expended from that line item. That's, that's, that's every year we do that with CPC, what the remaining is gonna go into the reserve.
Right.
Okay, so do we, yeah, all right, did we vote on, we get the little toy, did we vote on that one?
Yes.
No, yeah. Yeah, I got it, all right, I don't know what I'm thinking of, I thought we had something else. All right, back to the, back to the agenda then.
The only other article I think that will be changing is the snow and ice article at the beginning. I think we'll be able to remove it since we do not have deficit in our snow and ice. So I'll be taking that off.
All right, anything else on the budget, are the budget articles?
Other than Ms. Hebert's email about the school department, increasing their budget further is a little alarming after the process that general government's gone through to eliminate, basically chop our budgets down to nothing, and because of the reduction in state aid, I will make a comment about that, so that if the school committee's watching, they need to, you know, I think they need to do a better job than 3%, because now they're coming in with, instead of a 2% increase, a 3% increase, and the rest of our departments from general government, including public safety, has slashed their budgets as much as we can, and we're, and most of that state aid that we will be experiencing a shortfall comes in the scheme of the school department. So we're offsetting a lot of those shortfalls from general government, and meanwhile, the school departments increase in their budget 3%, I think that's, that's, that's getting a little frustrating from the general government side of things in our departments where, you know, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense at that point, and I'll leave it at that, but I think the school department needs to do a better job. You know, I understand they have issues, but so don't, so don't the general government side of the town, and I don't think it's appropriate that we're making up the offset of the reduction in state aid, which most of it is pertaining to the school, and yet they're gonna increase budgets while we have decreased budgets in the negative. So, you know, I think you gotta look at it in terms of fairness, and that's how I have to look at it, and I'm always trying to be fair to everybody, but, you know, I think, you know, one department getting $400,000, all the prop two and a half levy again this year versus what they did last year, and, and everybody else getting squeezed, and services will end up getting squeezed, and we're not getting road materials and doing road paving, and we're making drastic cuts, and it just can't keep being lopsided like that. We, we, I wouldn't appreciate some cooperation when it comes to that, Mr. Cabral.
Agreed, agreed. Well, especially, you know, with the, the outlook that we're gonna be slashed more than 5%, you know, 5% is $410,000 of, if they project 20% here in that article I read yesterday, that would be 1.6 million shortfall from the state. So, you know, I'm optimistic it'll be less than 1.6 million, but I, but I am realistic that it's gonna be more than 4.0, I mean, $410,000.
And I, and I think that the town, the Board of Selectmen, we had a $365,000 deficit. I know that we've narrowed that down, probably another 40 or 50 grand, Ms. Hebert, correct me if I'm wrong, so we might be somewhere around a 320 deficit, looking for the schools to do something, and we know that they're not because they're coming in with an increase in their budget, but I will say this, the Board of Selectmen reviewed articles last week, and the only articles that we did approve was for the school department. So I think that that needs to be taken under consideration as well, that we approved the $80,000 for the kids' playground at the elementary school, and I forget what the amount was, I think it was another 80,000 bucks.
85, 85 for the Wi-Fi.
For the Wi-Fi stuff, so that's about 165,000 that we're giving, you know, to the school.
Some of that, some of that CPC, that little toy CPC money.
Right.
That's, it was, it's still going there, and we're not using CPC for anybody else, except for 2,000 bucks for painting the fire department, Rogers. So it's just a point that, you know, all the funds that, all the revenues that the town, which we don't have a lot, right? We can't just allocate it to one side, you know, the education side and forget about general government, because we have needs in general government, which involves public safety. So we just need to be, all be conscientious of what we're doing, and I'm hoping, again, I don't use that term much, you never see me use the word hope, but I would like to see the school department to do a better job, and even the 2% was still looking at a $320,000 deficit, thereabout, so that's, that's still dangerous levels, but, you know, we understand the school as needs.
So, if I can't, I do, I do want to mention, so I did take part in the school's budget subcommittee meeting that they held today. I feel like it went well, you know, they were able to explain their side, and obviously, you know, we're dealing with the same thing on the town side. It's a difficult thing to cut services, especially when you're looking at education and students, but we did have a good discussion, and I think at the end of it, they understood where we are coming from in terms of this isn't a regular year where we're, you know, just trying to cut a new hire or something like that, you know, we're, we're anticipating we could be losing, like you said, Mr. DeRoche, 1.6 million dollars. So as much as we want to have these services for our students and they deserve these services, we may not have the means to afford them. So it was a good discussion, and I don't, I don't know if they made a vote after I left, I, I just sent a message to the superintendent to find out, but I'm hopeful that they will come around and present a budget that we're looking for, so. But I'm hopeful that they will, um, come around and, and present, uh, a budget that we're looking for, so.
Thank you. Anything else related to budget or articles?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I do wanna bring to the board's attention that we had a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the sewer enterprise fund to be reimbursed from the school department sewer pumping station that we know we can't no longer do. I, 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 as adamant as I am about wanting that money back because it's the right thing for the sewer users to have that money back in the surplus, that is part of the, I guess, what I'm, we, we, we're trying to understand everybody's needs and with, you know, I'm gonna say that we can hold off on it and, you know, not expend that money because we don't wanna just blow out all our free cash, right? So, and I, and I understand that, but it, there are things that we do need and we're putting those things off on the back burner. So again, I just hope that the school department can come around with their budget. And a two percent increase is not a cut by any stretch of the imagination. So I, we all need to work together. I think we've done a pretty good job over the last few years working together, Mr. Cabral, with the school department. Um, and I hope that will, I hope that will continue in the future, so.
Agreed. All right, moving on, under, uh, under old business. Well, let's start with, let's start with number four, the PJ Keating hearing discussion. Public hearing, which has been continued, uh, twice already. We had the original public hearing that was continued. We're supposed to have that public hearing next Tuesday night. Um, I've talked with town council who's, um, you know, said we could do it as a Zoom meeting. I, he didn't really feel, and I agree, that it, it's not the type of hearing that lends itself well to a Zoom hea- hearing. That given, given the number of people that attended the last hearing, um, that may want to, that are obviously interested in the, you know, in this process, um, that, you know, probably wanna attend the next hearing as well. Um, it doesn't feel like it lends itself well to Zoom. I will say the, you know, the other thing, we don't wanna certainly stall this, but, um, with the action the DEP took recently with regard to, you know, the relocation of the asphalt plant, I think the urgency is, is off, um, the public hearing, uh, for the land use license. So I'm not trying to delay this in any way, but I, I, um, you know, given the fact that we can't really have the hearing next Tuesday, I don't think the school's available to us yet. Um, I think we should try to kick that date out again. And, um, I'm open for suggestions as to when we do that because we've got, you know, we've also got town election and town meetings coming up. And I think we need to be practical with regard to how the, uh, COVID-19 restrictions are gonna, uh, are gonna roll back on the town. So I, I hate saying July, but, um, I think it's really harder to do it, you know, unless we, unless we go like third week of, third week of June perhaps.
Mr. Chairman?
Week of the fifteenth, Mr. Gasper.
The election, it was moved out to June twenty-seventh?
The election's June twenty-seventh. Our meeting is June twenty-second.
Uh, what?
You can do it the thirtieth.
Town, town meeting is June twenty-second. That's fine. The only comment that I wanna make on that, Mr. Cabral, is this. You've been part of this process since we've started it. I would appreciate you being there to the end.
Yeah, me, me, that some of that's possible, some of it's not possible. I, I'd stay, I'd love to stay till the end. That's one of the.
Well, I'm just saying to the public, till the public, once the public hearing's done, the public hearing's done, right? So, and, and you can always come in and weigh in with a board of selectmen meeting in the future, Mr. Cabral. We can invite you in because you've been part of it for your opinion and the board can weigh that opinion. Um, and I think it'll carry some weight because you've been a, a member of the, uh, board of selectmen for the last three years. So, you know, I know that I would, I would respect that, um, decision from you to be able to come back, even if you're not a member of the board of selectmen and I wouldn't.
I will, I will be there. I, I will be there, whether as a member of the.
Well, I'd like to do the.
This is something I'm very interested in.
I'd like the public hearing to be conducted while you're here in your, in your official capacity as a selectman.
Um, we wanna try then for the fifteenth of, is this Monday? We've been doing it Monday. No, Tuesday. So should we go the sixteenth? We've got a selectmen's meeting on the sixteenth already.
I would not wanna do it at the same meet, at the same night we have a selectmen's meeting. That gets a little bit screwy for the board. But I think we need to go into that meeting with our heads focused and not be focusing on ten other items on the agenda and then rushing into a public hearing.
Tonight, the fif, how about the fifteenth?
Yeah, whatever you wanna do, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Uh, you says we have a meeting on the sixteenth. What about the ninth? You know, we're pushing it, if we push it, it's due this time, uh, on the twenty-fifth, I believe.
Yes, you think we'll be able to use the small facility on the ninth?
That's next Tuesday.
I'm fine with that date, right?
That's next Tuesday, you know, pushing it out two weeks, you know, I'm open to that because I'd like to keep this process rolling.
Yeah, me too.
Comments made by Mr. Gaspar, correct? Uh, right now, you know, we have the opportunity to make a decision on this land use license. Uh, with the help of the DEP, um, rulings that have been made. And there, there's still many things. I mean, we can talk, I see it on the agenda to talk about. I mean, there's, there's many things that, uh, Keating is not, not complying with or making an effort, as far as I know, to, to start the process. And, uh, you know, if it comes down to the decision on the land use license, we have, uh, you know, just the fact there's no fire plan, no, you know, fire, uh.
Yeah, I've got some additional correspondence I wanna, I wanna share with the group as well.
You know, there's been no.
So the ninth, let me, is, let's go with the, the date first. Is the ninth at six o'clock fine with the two of you?
That works for me.
Yeah, Mr. Gasper, yes. Miss Hebert, yes?
I'll do whatever, yep.
Um, just a note, um, for the hearing, um, the original hearing, we were, um, planning it at the school and then we changed it the last minute to the COA because the school, um, had issues with, um, hosting it. I don't know if you want to still plan to have it at the Council on Aging Center or you wanna try to have it at the school.
Um, based on the crowd we had last time and based on the fact that we want people separated, I think the school's a better choice, but if we, if we can't have it there, we'll certainly go to the COA. I'm just afraid we're gonna have people all over each other in the COA that, that room can only hold so many. So let's, let's, um, let's try it. Mr. Gasper, go. Let's try it for the Fordville School.
We, we need to, well, we got town meeting on the twenty, twentieth or whatever that is. It's Saturday now, town meeting?
No, that's the election.
Town meeting, the election's on the twenty-seventh.
Right, town meeting, Dave.
It's the twenty-second, Monday, the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Uh, I thought there was seven days in a week. Uh, isn't town meeting always on a, on Saturday? We postponed it to a Saturday and then the following Saturday is the election?
Election's on a Saturday, town meeting's on the Monday. Town meeting's the Monday, the twenty-second. Town election is Saturday, the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so we left town meeting on.
On Monday.
On a Monday, okay. But, uh, so that's fine. So it, the election is in this gymnasium at the elementary school.
Yes.
I think in the, we're gonna do this discussion of all public hearings because we're gonna have to have one with PJ Keating. Maybe we should talk to the schools, Miss Hebert, and see if we just do all of our public hearings in the gymnasium at the elementary school where we'll be conducting the election in the little gymnasium at the elementary school. So we're only going in and the public's only utilizing one spot in the school and not multiple schools in different locations. We could do all our public hearings. The board needs to discuss how we're gonna allow cleaning board. Um, the board of health in the future might need to do, uh, public hearings. There, there's gonna be other public hearings that need to take place. We gotta set up a way for these guys to be able to get through public hearings. I think maybe we talk to the school department and say, can we just use the gymnasium? We're gonna use it for town meeting. I mean, the election, can we just use that, that room, the gymnasium and bring the chairs over there and, and just do public hearings over there as well and only be in one little gymnasium versus, and they can section it off like they do for elections and maybe just use that one little area of the gymnasium. It'd be a lot easier for cleaning purposes as well.
Yeah.
Let's talk to the school department, find out what's possible, if you could, Miss Hebert. Mr. Mayor, is there anything else on the agenda? You're certainly welcome to stay, but, um, I'll, I'll give you the, I'll give you the opportunity to escape if you want, unless there's anything else on the agenda you wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hold on.
I didn't, I thought you were staying here for something else.
You're welcome. You're welcome, right?
No, I don't know. I didn't know. I thought there was something else that you might wanna talk about.
I don't know. There's not, nothing else. I think it's just, it's awkward to.
He was just being nice and hanging out with me.
I know he, I was, know he was. I was giving, I was giving him, giving him an escape. All right, so PJ Keating's, all right, soil board permit update. I'm just gonna read an email to the, I'm just gonna read an email to you. Um, this is from, um, Jeffrey Blake to, um, David Toulon, who I'm assuming is PJ Keating's attorney. Uh, dear David, in anticipation of the May twenty-sixth board of selectmen hearing, I am writing to further request information from PJ, PJK. PJK's responses to the following will assist the board in crafting a mutually agreeable land use license. Um, and these were some of the points that I, that I'd raised and shared with, uh, shared with the group. A detailed decommissioning plan, including a budget backed by a bond, baseline sound study and a fugitive dust control plan. Um, at what time of night can PJ Keating cease operations so as to lessen the disruption to the nearby residences? Will PJ Keating be installing sound and visual barriers between the asphalt operation and the nearby residences? Will trucks leaving the facility be covered? Um, and just looking for a response to those points. Um, I, I don't know if you two gentlemen are aware of the incident we had at the, um, at the PJ Keating site this past weekend. Um, we're, uh, apparently, uh, not apparently, at, at approximately six fifteen.
Froze up, Roger.
I'm sorry?
You froze up.
Did you hear anything I said? I heard everything I said.
Right, exactly. At six fifteen and then you went off.
Okay, so you didn't know as much. At six, six, six fifteen AM last Saturday, PJ Keating started running a jackhammer type machine at the front of their property, um, resulting in numerous complaints to the, uh, to the police chief, to town hall, to the board of health. Um, it was witnessed by a police, a police officer was dispatched and witnessed the, uh, witnessed the noise at that time of day. Uh, PJ Keating has been, has been cited by the board of health, um, for a noise violation. Uh, the noise violation is in violation of their, uh, soil permit. The soil permit very specifically says that they will be in compliance with certain, uh, federal, federal, federal and or state regulations and, um, operating a jackhammer type machine at six fifteen in the morning, um, is clearly in violation of those regulations. And they were cited by the, by the board of health and, and, and told that they were in violation of the soil permit. So, um, it's, it, I'm, I'm just mystified as to, as to, as to how they thought running a jackhammer on a Saturday morning at six fifteen was a good idea, given where we are. But, Mr. Broch, go.
Well, also you mentioned the board of health today issued the order. And our order also expands that they can't, uh, refrain from making noise from nine PM to seven AM.
Yep.
Which is a, uh, you know, quite a step forward, I believe.
Yep.
You know?
And I've, I've talked, I've talked about the fact that I, that I, I really believe that the land use license and the soil board permit, uh, need to, need to talk about hours of operation and what reasonable hours of operation are. And I, I don't have nine to seven sound as a start. Um, but I, you know, especially with that asphalt plant in the front of the property, um, we clearly need to talk about that. Uh, and with what happened last Saturday, I'm just, I, I scratched my head. I just wonder what they were thinking when they started running that jackhammer at six fifteen in the morning. Um, you're right in the, right in the front of the property, right in front of the property.
Well, I, I got it.
But anyway, so the, the soil board permit, um, had a conversation today with the, um, you know, two, two schools of thought. I think, you know, land use license and soil permit, we could build, uh, we could build additional requirements into those documents. Um, the soil permit is already much more robust than it ever was in the past. And, and again, the, the, you know, they, uh, that action they took Saturday morning was in violation of, of their soil permit. And, and, um, they were cited for being in violation of the soil permit. So, um, you know, uh, speaking with Mr. Carrier earlier, he thought that, you know, the soil permit could be advanced as it is now and we could put additional conditions on the land use license that could, uh, be rolled into the soil permit in the future. That's, that's one way to proceed. Um, ideally, I'd like to see the language in the land use license, assuming it's approved, and the soil permit, assuming it's approved, um, say the same thing. And, and the email from, um, from Jeffrey Blake to their attorney, I think, talks about some of the things that, that, you know, we need to talk about. You know, if the asphalt plant is gonna be in the front of the property, um, what, what are you going to do to keep noise out of the neighborhoods? Because, you know, apparently you're not sensitive to, you know, what six fifteen on a Saturday morning is. Um, I doubt they're sensitive to what two AM on a, on a Monday is to most people. So if that, if that plant's gonna be at the front of the property, I think we need to have a plan for, um, how we let people sleep. Um, so I'm, I'm, um, any, should, should we oppose this? Should we be looking at the, at the soil permit as it's been presented by the soil board? Um, or should we be looking to add additional conditions? And I think, I think we're close to what those conditions are. I've asked, I've asked attorney Blake to, um, you know, put those conditions in a format where they could be appended to the soil permit and or the land use license. So I think we're close to having that finalized. Um, but we could just approve the soil permit as it's been presented to us by the, by the soil board as well. And I guess I'd, I'd ask you for comments on, on those two potential options moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did look at your email with some of the things and it kinda duplicate of some of the things. Uh, some of them a little bit different, um, but we both have, I guess, the same concerns in, in what we're looking to do. I, I, I like your concept where you're tying, and we talked about this before, we tie the land use in the soil board permit to each other. I, I, I would like to go in and I have some questions. I know I got caught up in the stormwater stuff and all this other stuff. And I, I, I got some things that I looked at from the stormwater. Um, but PJ Keating, I guess, got, that's what got me really wrapped up in all this stormwater stuff. And it's, it's just very convoluted where, where they went from two thousand sixteen, the states back to, to now. And I got a site plan that was drawn up in November of two thousand seventeen from File and Corp. Provide, perform the site plan for relocating the asphalt plant for PJ Keating. And that was in two thousand seventeen. In two thousand sixteen, Triton Environmental did a stormwater pollution prevention plan. It's, it's, it's labeled as an SWPPP and it's part of their NEPTES permit, um, which is a separate permit from FDA regulating the quarry is a NEPTES permit. It's called, it's for, uh, National Pollution Discharge Permit. It's got some other phrases to it, but that's the, the gist of it all. And that was, that Triton Environmental went out in two thousand sixteen. Um, that, that, that report's four hundred and seventy-three pages long. I did get through a few, you know, maybe a hundred, and I just got tired of reading it. Um, Woodwin and Coverland actually went out there, was hired by this town, which I was unaware of, in April two thousand eighteen to review that SWPPP and propose relocation of the plant and found minor violations. However, seven months prior to that, they were cited by the F, the EPA in two, October two thousand seventeen, under a violation of the Clean Water Act, which is a storm wash, stormwater pollution act. And they were fined, I think, like a hundred and some of the thousand dollars. I think Mr. Deroche actually sent us an email on it. That's where I got that information from.
He did. Yeah, they, they settled on a hundred and forty thousand. They were fined about two hundred and forty thousand.
And, and I, and I talked to you, talked to the board about the Clean Water Act because that stormwater drains right now, right below, a hundred and fifty feet below where their, 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 uh, liquid asphalt tanks are. And I, I'm just blown away at everything. And when I looked at the site plan that was done in two thousand seventeen for PJ Keating, the site plan for this stormwater management plan that they submitted to the town of Akushnet, it doesn't resemble anything that was built there. And then I went into that big, huge packet that Miss Hebert, um, had Melissa, uh, Assistant Town Accountant. We were at the first original public hearing. She came running through the door after our meeting, a regular meeting, before we went into the public hearing. I don't know if you guys remember that stack that they gave us with a bunch of number tags out of us, like this thick. So I jumped into that real quick when I got all confused on the site plan for the stormwater thing. And it does look like the maps have, the site plan has been changed. I'm just very confused on how we had a site map from two thousand seventeen, these events took place. Now I looked into that big packet that Miss Hebert provided us at the first public hearing and it looks like there has been some changes to. Now I looked into that big packet that Ms. Hebert provided us at the first public hearing and it looks like there has been some changes to a site plan. So it's just very confusing how all the events have taken place and we're bringing, getting wrapped around. So I just, I, I want to talk to Mr. Carrier a little bit about the soil board permit, make sure I understand certain things because I think that.
Mr. Carrier's done a nice job.
Yeah, so, so I.
On the, on improving the soil board permit.
I think you remember, Roger, I talked about it and I think I talked about it, Mr. DeRoche will remember because we were in the, we were in the public hearing and I told P J Keating, yes, you may have the right to operate on your property. You do not have the, the right to pollute my property. You have the right to operate within your boundaries. Not send pollution into my yard. So I guess my, some of my questions I got to talk to Joe about is, was, when this testing's being performed, are we performing these air quality tests and these noise tests at their borders? Are we somewhere? Because a resident may comment to us at the public hearing where they live on Green Meadow Drive, way down on Wing Road off of Hathaway Road, and they say some guy shows up every once in a while and puts a thing in the ground when they're blasting and they test for noise and nope, we're good. I mean.
Let me just interject here, so that, that the, uh, the Board of Health is close to hiring someone as a, with the title of the part-time health agent, but that individual, uh, their principal job responsibility will be to monitor, uh, the P J Keating facility and P J Keating's compliance with, uh, environmental laws and rules and, um, and that will absolutely involve, you know, the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. That is, that is going to be, it's a part-time job under the umbrella of the.
Right, we're, we're familiar with that, right.
Say that one more time, Mr. DeRoche.
It says, we're familiar with that proposal, it was all.
So that, it, it sounds like, it sounds like they're very close to filling that position, so, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I want to make sure when we're doing the testing, Roger, it's important that we're not testing a quarter mile away from the facility for air pollution. I mean, I live, I, in, in the way the industrial zone is, is that, that stupid industrial zone that I was the only one adamantly against in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, whenever the hell that was proposed, said something's wrong. You read the industrial zoning bylaw and it says that they can operate within like ten feet of their boundary. Really? I mean, would you want a core reoperation?
Well, let's, let's bring it into the, let's bring it back to the, the soil board permit update, just in, and the, the question of, um, you know, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to see us move that forward. I think it's, it's, uh, they're operating now without a valid permit. Um, I'd like to move that forward pretty quickly. Um, and I think, I think Mr. Blake, I spoke with Mr. Blake earlier this week and asked him to, um, you know, gave him some ideas of additional restrictions I'd like to see added to that. Um, and asked him to, uh, put those in language that could be appended to the soil permit. Again, to bring to this body for approval, certainly, but really want to try to move that forward unless you feel, the two of you feel, we should approve it as it's been presented by the Board of, uh, by the Board of Health. I, I, I personally am inclined to try to add some additional, um, some additional language to the soil board permit, but, but the document that we've got's, uh, much better than what we ever had. Uh, you know, two years ago, three years ago, it's, it's looking more like a document that, um, you know, really thinks about what, what's happening at that site and the impact on the, on the local, uh, on the neighbors.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mr. Chairman. I would, I would like the opportunity to spit, to speak with Mr. Carrier and maybe refine some of your requests. Again, your, your, your requests are pretty much in line with, where I was thinking with the hours and and you have a couple of other details in there that I don't talk, I won't talk about now, um, as far as asphalt and stuff like that go. But I, I promise that I'll submit something to Ms. Hebert this week if I have, it's not going to differ much from you.
Really, we're really at the point where we need to, we need to, we need to move this. We, we really.
That's why we got the, uh, the soil permit moved from the, had the, uh, soil board sign off on it to bring us to us because ultimately.
Believe it, I think we've had it, I think we've had it for six weeks. I, I may be exaggerating that, but.
You know, but we've also, you know. Complicated, but we've had the help from the D E P. You know, right, right there, you know, they're.
Changed everything.
Lines to, uh, to start that thing up. Um, you know, once they start it, is it going to be too noisy in that area? I mean, there's all these variables which are going to be interesting to see what happens. But adding compliances to the soil board permit, I'm a hundred percent on board with that. And then, then having the proper testing.
I, I expect to have those soon. I expect to have those soon.
So Roger, Roger, there's just, there's a couple of things.
But Mr. DeRoche, are you done, Mr. DeRoche? I'm freezing up over here somehow.
You guys are all freezing up.
Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to open my door, hoping that improves my Wi-Fi, but I don't, I don't know how that works. So, um.
So Roger.
I will hopefully have, I will hopefully have some additional proposed language for the, for the soil board permit uh, very quickly. I spoke with Mr. Blake earlier this week and hopefully we can move that forward because I'd, I'd like, I'd like, um, I'd like approval of something soon.
So Roger, one of the other things that I'm, 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 I'm looking into, and I spoke with a, a couple of the individuals that are familiar with asphalt plants. And it was a little disturbing to hear that the liquid asphalt plants, you know, the liquid asphalt tanks, you know, the one for the land use license? They have these recoils that go, they have the, these like recoil things that go on the top of those tanks. And what it does is it recirculates the vapors, the smell that come, the odor that comes out of those tanks. And I'm told that P J Keating has not put those on top of their tanks and they haven't utilized it for the last couple of years, so. That odor's going to really stink out there, so I want to make sure that that's part of that soil board permit and the land use permit.
I suspect that's what the D E P is looking at as well.
Yeah, and that, and that, and then, and to answer your question, Mr. DeRoche, um, if you ever heard an asphalt plant operate even at idle, when they're, when they're at like an idle speed, they're extremely loud and I can guarantee you this, when that asphalt plant's up and running and, and it's pumping, it's going to be extremely loud out there.
Right, so will it be in compliance with the regulations that are established?
Well, that's some D E P, D E P's got to figure some of that out on, on their behalf, on our behalf, certainly, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's something what D E P's doing.
You know.
All right, gentlemen, looking, looking at the, looking at the agenda and I, I just want to talk about where we are and where we're going. I, at, uh, at seven thirty, I'm, I'm going to suggest that, uh, we, we do meet. We do meet next Tuesday night at, at five o'clock. That we move the items under, uh, new business as well as the executive session um, to that meeting, if that's fine. And that we let Ms. Hebert do her report and that be the final item of business on the agenda. Because otherwise I, I think we've got another hour ahead of us. So if that, if, if you don't, without objection, um, I'd like to do that. So look at your new, your new business items. Your executives, the executive session, which we were going to have tonight.
I'm good with that, Mr. Chairman.
Move that, move that out to a meeting next Tuesday at five. Um, let, uh, Ms. Hebert, uh, do her town administrator report. Uh, Ms. Hebert.
Wait, I'm okay with it. I'd just like to see if we can start wrapping up, uh, the, the hiring of our town accountant in executive session next week. Uh, I don't know if she'll join us while she isn't there to discuss the actual.
And that, should we do that tonight, Ms. Hebert, or can that wait a week?
Um, I think we can have a quick executive session, um, and then we can, we can continue it to next week if we need to. But I, I'd like to at least have a quick one to, to get everything started.
Then let's do, then let's do that.
Let's go over the basic.
Twenty-six.
And may I finish? Has she been, uh, given the contract? Has it been, uh, proposed to her yet? So our executive session is going to be in line with what we've written and, uh, so we can just go over that, see if we're okay with the number? Is that jet, in general, what we're looking to do?
Yes.
Okay, so then.
I read the contract.
We can make it very short. I'm with you, with everybody that.
We'll do it.
You know, just to go over a basic overview of it.
So skipping, uh, skipping new business, town administrators report.
Okay, I'll be quick. Um, I, I know I, I, um, I've mentioned this before, um, what a great job our Council on Aging has done. Um, and I'm sure Heather will be a little embarrassed that I'm going to bring her up again, but, um, she's done an amazing job, the Council on Aging. Um, I posted this to the website, but I did want to announce it at a selectmen's meeting. Um, they've worked hard with the school department and they are now offering free produce for Acushnet seniors and families with school-aged children. They're doing alternating Thursdays, rain or shine, nine A M. Um, they ask that you don't arrive early, um, but they have, um, them for pickup at the Acushnet Senior Community Center. Um, and so again, this is on our website and I, I believe the Council on Aging has it posted as well, but, um, May twenty-first, June fourth and June eighteenth are pickup days for the Acushnet school families. And May twenty-eighth, June eleventh and June twenty-fifth are, um, pickup days for the Acushnet seniors. Um, so they're asking for, um, one box per family, contactless pickup, masks required, um, proof of residence is required, um, but income eligible, income eligibility is not required. Um, although they're asking that this program is intended for, um, only those in need, so. Um, another great program. Again, thank you to the Acushnet Council on Aging, um, Heather Sylvia and, um, the school for putting that on. Um, the other items that I had, and I don't know if you want me to put it off, uh, Mr. Chair, the D P W request that came through today, if you want me to.
Yeah, I'd like, I would like, I would like to do that, please.
Okay, um, so the D P W sent an email out today, um, and, uh, Mr. Cabral had informed them that Sears Lane is a problem with the potholes. Um, Dan went out, measured the area, um, to repair the road, the road correctly. Would need a patch of two hundred and, two hundred and seventy feet long by twenty-seven feet wide with two and a half inches of binder and one and a half inches of top. Uh, this would take a hundred and eighty-one tons of mix at sixty-four dollars a ton. So it would be a total of eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars for the mix. Um, Dan would be looking for approval from the board for this project and the funds would come from the article that we have for road paving.
Let me, I'll give you the background on it. So this is, uh, a resident had contacted me about two years ago complaining about road conditions at a, at a, I think it's Burt Street and Sears Lane. Um, I went to look at it. I was shocked with the condition of the roadway in that spot. And I'd, I'd invite you to go see it. See it, Burt and Sears, uh, Burt runs down to Middle Road. Um, and, uh, the D P W pretty quickly went in there and, you know, patched up the multiple potholes. But it really, it, it really hasn't stayed. It's really, it's a roadway, it's a, it's a section of roadway that's really, really deteriorated. The resident reached out to me again and said, you know, we've got a, we've got potholes there, they're going to swallow my car. I sent an email off to the, the D P W expecting them to go out and say, all right, we're going to fill some potholes. You know, the typical, we've got a pothole, we fill it. And, um, they came back with, well, the way to do this right is, um, what's the proposal? So it's about eleven thousand dollars in materials and, um, what's the length of the repair? Ms. Hebert, you've got it in front of you. I may have it in front of me.
Yeah, um, two hundred and seventy feet long.
Hundred and seventy feet. So this is, this, this roadway is, and again, I'd invite you to go see it. Um, it's, roadway is surprisingly bad in this location.
Mr. Chairman? Let me, let me, let me make this real easy on you. This is, this is exactly the reason why we look to appropriate in that, that, that article, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, to get big patches repaired. I mean, Nice Lane, I talked to Mr. Menard a month ago about Nice Lane near Arugio Brothers, the, the whole road from one side to the others is all screwed up. There's a massive hole at the top of Nice Lane now in the center of the road. Um, Pleasant Street, I was with some residents down on Pleasant Street and South Main Street. Their condition at the top of their road is a real mess. They, they basically threw some patch stuff in there. I make a motion to approve the roadway, um, work that Mr. Cabral just recommended and we could take it up on other bases of other roadways.
I'll second.
DeRoche, second. Further discussion?
I.
In favor?
I.
I.
Hebert, you'll communicate with the Department of Public Works?
I will.
Thank you. Anything else under your report, Ms. Hebert?
No.
Okay, so. Um, that said, we're going to move our new business to next Tuesday night. Um, any selectmen announcements? So next meeting is next Tuesday night, five P M. I'd like at this point a motion to go into executive session under General Law Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-One, Paragraphs Eight Two, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel on a conduct, contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town accountants. As an open meeting, will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining, litigating position of the public body as the chair so declares, and I do, and the board will not return to public session. Can I get a motion to go into executive session, Mr. Gaspar?
Yes.
A second, Mr. DeRoche?
Uh, yes.
All in favor, roll call vote, Mr. DeRoche? Mr. Gaspar, yes?
Yeah, I kind of did that backwards on, I did that backwards on you.
All right, we're good.